Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Let's call this meeting to order at 6:00 AM. Do we have adjustments to the agenda? That's number one.
Yeah. I have just one comment, although it doesn't need to be an adjustment. But under the new business, the special ed update, we should include the approval of the D seven policy that we had discussed after last meeting.
Can we vote on a policy approval that was, as long as we do it as an adjustment, is that okay? And if you could vote.
The board doesn't mind. I mean, it's basic. It's already been, it's already been accepted and adopted by other boards. And it's been out there and they commit to be, public has had a right to look at it. And since we have special ed being the update on it, we can include it under there because it's just an update on their policy.
I'm going to sort of Molly because she knows the most about these things. Is it okay if we vote on something we add to the agenda? The policy approval?
So. I didn't know what we could. My, so if we haven't listed it.
We can do anything that the board wants to do. And, and you know, it's, I mean, it's, it's a wait another month to put it in as our policy when all we're doing is adding two paragraphs to it.
I guess if we vote on it and somebody complains, they will make us affirm the vote.
We can affirm the vote.
So let's, okay, add that in. Um, whatever.
As part of the special education update, that's on there. Special education updates on there. And that's, and that's what it is, is an update of the special ed policy.
All right. Uh, any other adjustments? Cheryl?
I think you had proposed one having to do with making, you know, it's really here.
Yeah.
Non-exempt.
It was, yeah, it was already in there.
Okay, so maybe for an adjustment.
Yeah, that's not an adjustment.
Lynn? Um, I was just talking with Priscilla, refreshing my memory. And we are going to be having a policy meeting coming up next week. Could we sort of refresh everybody's memory on what we're doing with that? Because I remember talking about it, but I couldn't find any notes on it.
We can do a brief update of policy.
Uh, where we're going, what's expected.
But can you, don't want to do it right now?
It doesn't really matter.
I'm okay with adding it as two A. Go ahead.
Okay.
Brief update, please.
Okay, so basically the, the policy committee is meeting on November fourteenth from five to six.
December fourteenth.
December fourteenth. What did I say, November? I'm back on November, sorry. I'd like another month before Christmas holidays. Um, on December fourteenth, next Tuesday, from five to six, that's a firm amount of time. We will be done at, I think, no longer than six. We have it covered. We'll cover it into the next one. Receiving tomorrow at the very latest on Friday, um, a, uh, one of the policies for you to look over, if you're a member of that committee. And so that you can bring your ideas to the board. It's just updating mostly the B policies is what we're looking at for that.
What do you mean by B?
The ones that are listed under B in, in our, in our, in the Vermont, uh, School Boards Association manual.
Okay.
Is that online? We will send them.
There's required, recommended and suggested.
Right. I would say the recommended.
She's referring to the recommended ones.
Okay. And we're trying to get all through all the recommended ones just as quickly as we can. And then if there's any that take longer, we can take longer on them. But if they're quick and fast, we can do them just as, you know, the, the member that has it recommends this. Either we stay strictly to it or we have to look at it more. And we can read through it quick and just.
So you want us to read over the one you assigned us?
Yes.
And?
And we'll give you the one that's in our policy book. And we'll give you the one that's, you know, that's in Vermont.
Oh, okay.
So you can just look at them and see if we want to think anything should be added.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I just counted, we do indeed have enough people here to have a meeting.
Right, yes, we do. We checked.
All right, communication and public comments.
Yeah, under public comment, I'm Paul Reese, a past custodian at the high school for eighteen years. And I read some stuff in the paper. It was kind of caught me off guard. And I just want to make it a little clearer for you guys as you've been discussing like roof units and that. I was hired in nineteen ninety-nine for the school as a maintenance guy. And my job every summer was to go up and inspect those roof units. And I just want the board and the school to know, they knew as far back as nineteen ninety-nine that the small units did not work. And I would go up every year, replace belts. There were some that were, when you push off, they came on. On was off. Um, so they were well aware. And then towards the last year before I got done out of frustration, I actually called the state of Vermont. And they were well aware, well in advance that the smaller units weren't taken out the back air. So when I read that it just came to light the past year to their attention, to the state's attention, the taxpayers should really know, they knew that is nineteen ninety-nine, that those roof units weren't working. And if you ever have any questions on anything else, uh, Mr. Hodgson asked me one time for a written detailed report, what needed to be fixed. Before I left, I wrote him, I think it was two pages, and put it on his desk. And I put that this school needed over a million and a half dollars for repairs. He had a copy and I still may have a written copy of that. So when I read in the paper that it's some big magical thing that nobody knew about, a lot of things people didn't know about. There was electrical wiring done in this school. I went to the fire marshal in Springfield to get the floor units all fixed. All the door units were wired with extension cords. And they would spark and act like a welding torch. Finally, they were made to run them through conduit. So things here for eighteen years were done illegally. And I could discuss more, but I won't. But I just want to bring it to your attention and the taxpayers that they were well aware of it.
What year did you send that letter?
That was probably around, to crisp, was probably around two thousand and eighteen or so before I left. The state was actually called prior to the letter. And they didn't even know who to send me to. When I says the quality of the air isn't right, you know, it needs to be like the central school updated. They didn't even know who to send me to. So, and then there's other, another issue that always concerned me. You know, the fire marshals, your guy, everything's okay. Well, when you get up on the roof and you go to open one of the doors to go outside in the summer with the heat, you could not even open that door. You would run, drop, kick it, smash into it because it would swell up with the heat. So if there was ever a fire in the building, no one could get out. Above the auditorium with the ladders, that's locked with a chain. So if you're up top and there's a fire, you can't even get out. So when the fire marshal and the state officials come, they should do a little better detailed check. And I also called one time when we had an investigation of mice here. The principal's own son opened the whole back door and mice jumped out of the silverware. And there were droppings of mice droppings everywhere on the counter. Okay? Nobody did anything until I got a hold of the state. And they finally decided to put rat bait out throughout the school. So I'm just saying the chain of command, when things were brought to their attention, I was laughed at and called the whiner that I whined about everything. Well, some of the stuff needed to be whined about. When you sanded walls in a school, three walls with a sander and spray, poison paint, that's illegal under the Attorney General's laws. So I just want to let you clear it up a little bit so you have a better view of what really happened. And I don't blame Mr. De Bell because, you know what? He inherited a lot of the, everything's fine. The roof, the units in the gymnasium, the heat units, never even worked. Never even worked, those vaporized units. And my job every year was to go up, change filters, change belts, and it never got fixed. So I just pass it on. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah.
We have other public comments? No? Okay. Review approved minutes from November tenth.
Molly, can we approve the minutes from October twenty-seventh?
We tabled that because we didn't have them. Is that correct?
No, we didn't. We, we put them off till this meeting. We have those, but we did not get the November ones till this afternoon, late this afternoon. And I'd like to put those off because I haven't had a chance to review those.
Can we have a motion to approve the October minutes?
I would make a motion to do that.
Is there any corrections? And we have a vote on it.
You might want to correct Cheryl's name to C H E R Y L instead of Shirley. Under number eight.
Correct Cheryl's name under number eight. And can we vote on approving as corrected? Brenda?
Yes.
Uh, Jason?
Yes.
Anybody else at home?
David Major.
David Major?
Yes.
I only have to say that it's not, it's not.
It's not budget, sorry.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's all right. Lynn?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Although, yes, Cheryl, you can't vote on non-budget either. Okay. Um. Five. So five, A and B, we're going to do five C under finance, the budget update and six A budget update. We need to table till after the executive session. So we will start with the interim superintendent's report.
Um, so I knew, or I assumed that there was going to be a lot on with the budget. So I just really wanted to present, I was asked to present an organizational chart, how we're reviewing, using the employees in the office. I can't hear. Gosh, no. That was good. Um, so. I just. One day I'll finally get good at this. I apologize. So, um. The way, the way I view leadership is not from a top-down, top type of approach, but from a collaborative approach where folks can work autonomously, but also communicate with each other. And one of the things I've seen in the last four years is that departments or offices have not communicated with each other. And, and so there's a lot of time where everything has to go through the superintendent to get something done, which then slows down a process. But at the same time, as the director, I was unable to, you know, have a conversation with, uh, have a conversation with, um, the curriculum person. Um, and, and we weren't able to have that. And if we needed to get something done, you know, we just couldn't go to the next person and, and make it flow. Um, and so in trying to visualize it, it's breaking really up into two teams, even though it is one big, large team. But we have a district leadership team that deals with, you know, finance, student services, information technology, our principals, and also a proposed, that I'm proposing, a director of innovation. And then on the other team is our operation. That includes Harley's, Harley and Harley's folks. Human resources, but, and then director of operations. And so to get all of these folks to be able to kind of function and talk to each other. The director of innovation, which is what I'm proposing, that we utilize title funds and S R funds is to really talk about our, our MTSS and our social emotional learning of our students. That's the main task. This year, we have seen that our students are suffering quite a bit. And, um, and we need some real coordination and direction there. We do a lot of these individual things, like restorative practices and responsive classroom and zones of regulation. And, uh, but they don't all talk to each other. And, and that's part of it. And the other part of MTSS is the curriculum piece. And, and MTSS, by the way, I'm sorry, David Clark's not here to correct me. Um, it's multi-tiered systems of support. And it deals with looking at tiers. And the idea is that the universal, what every kid gets is a tier one. So every kid gets that type of stuff. A tier two is, is kind of like a, a relearning tool. So a teacher in a classroom is going to identify certain kids need additional learning. And so they're going to take that time during that, in class. Tier three would be our title type of stuff where we, we might do some pull-out, might do some push-in. But we're really targeting specific kids with specific needs. And this is all pre-preferable to special education because special education is not even part of an MTSS model. MTSS is all regular education. And then the same thing happens on the behavioral side or the social emotional side, where what we're doing is, what are we doing to address all students? That's what a responsive classroom is. Every student gets responsive classroom. All our teachers are trained in responsive classroom. But then also there's the tier two, where we start getting into some restorative practices, but also some other pieces of, of responsive classroom. And then a tier three is that really intense one-on-one. Again, what does that student need? And it's not that the student needs all those things all the time. You can be tier one in mathematics because you love mathematics. So you, you know, your behavior's low and, you know, your social emotional, you're able to do that. But you, you've got, maybe when you get into writing, writing is your frustration. So your, your, you might need more help emotionally at that same time, but then you also might need more help academically. But then also at times we have, we have kids who are coming in and they've suffered, you know, we're in what, month twenty-one of this pandemic. And they just need help regulating how to be students and whatnot. And so it's, it's a position I, I can see sun setting as, as we move along or, or, you know, not needing a, a full person all the time. But right now we need the ability to get in there and, and help shore things up and, and look at some of those. Excuse me, director of finance, obviously is to administer and direct, maintain our finances for the district and ensure that we have those resources flowing. Uh, director of student services is directly related to special education. Technology, obviously, is, is looking at how we are using technology, but not just using technology, how we're using it as a, as a teaching and learning tool. You know, moving away from just a, hey, here's the guy who gets those computers. But, you know, moving that in a direction of how we're using that as an educational tool. And then our principal leadership teams, our principals bringing them together in that sense. Um, so in looking at this coordination, so the director of innovation, as I talked about, would do, would do a lot of the work with the data and the data being used for that MTSS intervention. Also looking at, um, our EST, which is our educational support teams. And, um, and then also binding that with after-school and summer coordination. As you know, recently we had a resignation of the person who had that position. And so when we talk about innovation, and, and the word innovation is because it's, it combines so much, but it's looking at our educational process differently than we've looked at it before. And, and how do we use curriculum? How do we use our, our, our time outside of the school day to effectively help students with loss of learning and whatnot? Again, you know, director of finance is accounting and grants management coordination, accounts payable and payroll, student services and special education. We'd also ask them to continue coordination of the five oh four process, be the five oh four coordinator. But also look at some of the other, and a lot of this is because kids are touched by a lot of people and there's a lot of crossover. And that's been the other problem is that the same people, different people have their hands in on one kid and you've got a whole bunch of people that have to come together. And so like with McKinney event though, and ELL and, and SAC, which is the, the substance abuse, a lot of times, unfortunately, those kids are aligning themselves also under student services. So it's, it's bringing some of those together so that we, we have one person working with families as opposed to multiple people working with families. And then the director of information technology, it's obviously the systems and the network, but also overseeing data, our technicians, bringing coordination of our library and media specialists under that, where that typically has existed just in each building. It's bringing some of that coordination as, especially as libraries are shifting more to involvement with media. And then coordination of our STEAM coordinator, which is the science, technology, engineering, art and mathematics. And then just with our, our principals, a lot of this is not, this is very, is similar to what is happening right now, but it's just kind of defining their roles a little bit. In that sense, under middle school, high school, you see there's team leaders and department chairs. There's team leaders at the middle school and their department chairs at the high school. So that's the reason for that piece there. In the operations teams, responsibilities and oversight, director of operations, buildings and ground, oversight of the building and ground staff, the middle school and high school building managers, outside contractors, building vendors, working with the fire marshal and the bill, building inspector, as we heard earlier, other insurance providers, and then also overseeing the transportation coordinator. So really trying to bring those operations in line. In nutrition, it's oversight of the food service sites and the leaders, but the kitchen staff, the food vendors, health inspectors, and then the child nutrition programs. And then human resources is, you know, is working with payroll for, for staff, but it's also vis-à-vis, the high, those are the insurance pieces. And then working with some of those other things, so. And then this piece is really talking about how they are shared roles. Because often this is what we're talking about, where people don't talk to each other and how do they know how they support each other? And so it's defining that piece. So, you know, the director of finance, when they work with the principals, it's establishing budget priorities. It's having oversight of building expenditures, manage the use of funds, you know, fiscal responsibility and support of the FTE communication. And so it's really defining, as you go through it, defining how each supports each other. And, and so people know, because a lot of times, especially in the last three months, when I talk to people, they're like, well, you know, they don't necessarily always talk or they don't know how they support each other. So a lot of this was that piece. And, and it goes, you have a hyperlink for this and, but it goes through a lot of what I just talked about. So when you get into the director of innovation and how that person would be supported and supporting each other, you know, through there. That is what I have. I don't know if there's any questions on that.
Um, do you have? Yes, I don't know if you need to put names on it, but what positions are open? Do you have them sort of between open and not open?
So all of these positions, the only position we don't technically have is the director of innovation. So that would be a position that I would, I would like to advertise for this year. I don't know if I'm going to find someone, you know? But we might be able to find someone towards the end of the school year or something like that, or maybe mid-year. But Ricky Adams is our director of IT. Right now Stacy Alexander is the acting director of student services. Laura Pagan is the director of finance. And our, our very principals are, the, the current principals in the building. And then, um, as we go down, in director of operations is Jim De Bell. The director of nutrition services is Harley. And then, um, the human resources director is Joel.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Hi, thank you, Andy. That is, I think, I'm impressed and I like your focus on horizontal integration as, you know, as well as beyond the vertical integration. What I'm not seeing is who is responsible for curriculum integration? Who's looking at the math curriculum and the science curriculum and the reading arts curriculum and so on? And I, it's a particular pet peeve of mine to see that STEAM is under the IT director because only one of those letters is technology. The others are science, engineering, art and mathematics, which are, you know, an IT director has no necessary expertise or, or thoughts on. So perhaps it's another chart somewhere, but I just wonder, is there another, another plan for how curriculum is integrated across all the schools and vertically up through the grades?
Yeah. So, uh, thank you, Charlie. So the director of innovation would be, would be partnering on curriculum review committees and would, would be involved in that, in the curriculum coordination along with myself. So it would be, it would become a more of a dual role because I have taken on some of those things. It's just looking at where, right now, our, our biggest need is on the social emotional learning and I can continue to take on the curriculum coordination. Um, and, and, and that's part of, part of where the, the conversation and the communication is, is it's not necessarily that Ricky Adams is directing the STEAM person. It's just giving people coordination of who they go to. Our current STEAM person, Christina Smith, yeah, I got it right, does it, she, she's kind of a jack of all trade and wears many hats. And so she does a lot of stuff with, um, working through Ricky and his office. And so we, we, it's become a good relationship of how that integrates. But even talking with Christina, there is a need to bring her more into the fold. And that's where using innovation and using that director of innovation who can cross, discuss those lines so that we do have that coordination.
I see. So I totally agree with you that social emotional learning is the, is the, you know, the front of the pile here. But I hope that somewhere down the line, these committees, that they're going to look at integrating on some, on subject level areas, you know, become more evident and more active and more, you know, more transparent. So we know what's happening and what's being said and what's being thought about.
Definitely. And one, and one of the things we're going to look to do is, is we've had a, rollout now of Fontas and Pennell as a reading program, just as an example. And, and so later on this year, we're going to gather principals and teachers and take a review of, you know, how that rollout has, has gone. Is it, you know, where's, what's the data showing us? And then we'll be establishing the same, you know, types of committees for mathematics and for all of our curriculums that we're, we're, we need to, we need to look at it as a pre-K through twelve as opposed to, let's look at the high school curriculum. Let's look at the middle school curriculum. So it needs to flow. I, I mean, my, I can remember my own sons telling me how frustrated they were in their school district when in, you know, tenth grade, they're reading the same book that they read in sixth grade. And they're not going any deeper, you know? So, so that, that's the kind of stuff we need to make sure we're not doing. And, and really looking at what are we teaching and how are we teaching it?
That's great. Thank you.
A good, good question.
Anyone else?
Uh, yeah, I, I have one question. This is David Major.
And I think this is excellent work, Andy. And I just have a couple of little comments really and questions. Under the Director of Innovation, I don't know what local comprehensive systems means. And that's really, I'm sure it means something, but it'd probably be better to, you know, use some different words or explain it in some fashion that. In your basic, basic description for the Director of Innovation, you use the words to provide leadership and local comprehensive systems.
That's referring to our assessment systems, but I see what you mean, how that can be misleading. So that's our different assessment systems that we use.
Okay. And then, and then just note that the, the description of the Director of Innovation is too similar to the description of the Director of Technical, of Tech, Information and Technical Services. And in using, they both seem to be a lot of coordination, a lot of innovation. And it might be better just for those like me who are just sort of trying to understand where you're going with this, to clarify the differences. And then lastly, this is, I know this is about kind of the central office and the operations of the, of the supervisory union. But I, in order to sort of acknowledge and also get the, get the buy-in, if you will, and of the, of the greater community, I think it's important to say, you know, have something in there mentioning, or at least mention it myself, that the voters allocate the funds and decide some of the priorities through the elected boards, go to the superintendent, and then the staff that you're talking about works out that those, what's to be done in the program for our children. So, so it's just, you know, acknowledging the, the, the community around this bureaucracy that you're describing, I think is important. That's all. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Stella, I think in addition to this, this is wonderful what you've done. But I think in addition to this, as far as the budget committee, we need to know what positions are under there and where the funds are coming from. If they're coming from S or if they're coming from title, if there's something that's in our budget. And I know I'm still not clear on that as Chair of the Budget Committee. So I really feel like I need a full overview of.
Sure, we give a funding in there. Yeah. Sorry.
This is wonderful. Thank you. Oh, Sharon.
So I echo the thanks for, for all of this. I want to reinforce what Charlie Hutchinson said. I too was looking at STEAM and wondering about how it fit there. So appreciate your explanation for that. It is so much more about curriculum than it is about technology. So we need to make sure we're addressing that. In general, I think it's important for people to get that we're missing the curriculum coordination piece. So I want to hear more about the Director of Innovation. And I begin with saying there's a real need in my view, so I can see the value of that. That's just where I will, I will start. With one other topic though, I think the description of the finance role is light. What I'm missing there is seeing kind of a bigger picture of the whole fiscal management system, how it relates to Vermont state law and things like that. How it relates to the taxation system for the, for the citizens. None of that shows up there. There was no big picture set of responsibilities in that job description. It was accounts payable, it was grants management, but it didn't address what are really big challenges we're facing. And we need that help.
Thank you.
Okay, Callan. Oh, sorry.
So the chart is, is good. As I read that chart, I thought, you know, good for you. I hope that you've got some team building coming up or something to get everyone to those, to that place where you talked about, getting everyone to communicate together because I don't know how long I've been on a board or I've been involved in the SU, but this is the first time that I've seen anything and heard that we are telling people that they need to talk to each other, not go to me. Talk to your, talk to your other departments and that communication role going so that you can, so that you can do your job and not, you know, not micromanage everyone. And so I, you know, that, that can continue to grow in a very positive way because, you know, there's been so much negative feedback at my level. I mean, I'm not in your office, but twice a year, but, you know, just street talk is that, that that isn't happening. So I, I really hope that, I've seen very good things from you in leadership. I hope that you can continue to bring that all together because it's what makes everything run smoother.
Thank you. Yeah. One of the things we implemented already this year, and it seems so simple, but on Monday, we have a stand-up meeting of the whole central office staff. And literally everyone just goes around and talks about what they got on their plate for the week. You know, at least of what we know on, and Monday at 10 o'clock in the morning. But, but part of it is, it's really helpful for me to understand, you know, you know, Jason who's doing payroll, like, don't bug him this week at payroll, right? Like, you know, we don't think about those things and for, you know, or, you know, what Flora has got on her plate, what she's dealing with, right? So we can go around and, and that's helpful because then everybody's hearing it. And especially now where we're, we are, we're tight, you know, like it, we're leaned, I guess is a better word. And so it's, everyone hears where who's picking up what piece and that, you know, it has been helpful. So, and the principals have been, you know, the elementary principals have a real good, they have a, like a, almost a professional learning group, you know, that they do. And then we're able to go to it and share a lot of that. So it, I think that the pieces are there and they're coming together, so.
Good. Thank you, Michael. Deb, thanks for joining. Calendar.
So. So there's, there's a couple of things. And I was just able to meet with the Association yesterday and share just some thoughts, but I, so there's two parts. There's one is talking about our current calendar. And the other one is talking, you know, just, I wanted to at least share out some ideas of what we're looking at for next year. We don't have all of our, we don't have everything as far as professional development and whatnot, but we're looking at start dates and trying to align with the other, with our other SUs in the area so that our kids that go to Brattonboro and Springfield and stuff of that nature. So just real quick on that piece, so.
Sharon.
So this is, this is next year's calendar that we're, we're, we're looking at. And we're looking at a start date of around the 30th. And when talking with the other superintendents, there was a lot of feedback for starting after September, after Labor Day. And the feeling that maybe needing to start a little sooner was the right way to go. Again, this is, this is based on River Valleys. You guys have a doctored up one for us a little bit that we sent out. But again, looking just at dates, in this calendar, it moves, it moves laterally and then back over, you know, right to left as opposed to up and down. So it's a little different. But what we're looking at is obviously our holiday break, where it is, but looking at a February break, which is this last full week in February. And then in talking, this is, I just learned, you know, with the other superintendents, this April date has been getting closer to the February date. And it's just how the calendar works. And so they're trying to keep it from getting too close. Because you're getting to a point where you might just be having a March week off. But, but also looking at an end of, of school date around, around the 16th type of thing, so. But one of the things I would like to build in and have a discussion with, but just to put out there, is building in at least early release days next year, at least once a month, an early release day. Maybe, you know, we have had conversation about the, you know, with two early release days with, with real, because time is such a commodity for, for our staff that with one that's focused on curriculum and stuff like that, and another one that's focused on social emotional learning, right? So that we're hitting our two big pieces every month. And then, again, the coordination is not, oh, we're going to do building base this day. Another, we're doing, another group is doing a whole bunch of other stuff. Everybody's working on the same big topics at each early release. So, but I do know that early releases are, they impact our families, so. And looking at that. The, the other calendar, which.
Before you do that, can we look at graduation date?
Yep.
Because Father's Day would be the 19th, so graduation needs to be the 15th. Is that the way you've got it scheduled?
We haven't scheduled anything in here. All we've done is look at begin, begin date and end date of school, counting the 175 days. So we haven't gone in and I haven't had time to even talk with the Association to start marking days, because there's professional development days that we would mark in there also, so.
Because as a new superintendent, we had just voted that we would keep it there and.
And I am aware of that, right? So, so again, this is, what you're looking at is, it's the River Valley starts kind of, when I'm learning, they start the process. They come up with it first and they put it out there and then everyone starts kind of working around it. So I, I just wanted to get people to start thinking about that. We're already thinking about next year and get it on your, your plate, but to hear those things.
And as you're thinking about it, then that first week of school, I would suggest that if at all possible, you have three student days. It always looked nicely if you had three student days the first week, then four the next week, and then you go into five. It's just kind of a building thing for your students.
Yeah.
And the parents.
Parents too. I mean, at three days at the end of the week, you are exhausted.
Yeah, definitely. So for, for this year, my, my, I'm going to try and pull up. I'm trying, I'm trying to do this on the fly, Ricky. Because we have, we uncovered a problem in our, in the calendar, so just to be blunt. There is, so February 28th, which is the Monday, let me just share this up here, please. So February 20th, so we go on winter break this last week of February. February 28th, we have down as a student day. March 1st is town meeting day. So we're gone for a week, we come back for one day, then we go back out again. However, professional development was planned and paid for, for the elementary teachers, all of our elementary schools on the 28th. And it can't be canceled. And so what I would like to propose is that we use February 28th as a professional development day for the entire SU. The outcome of that would not change the end of the year for students. It would be one less professional development day at the end of the school year for teachers. So it, it, it would, it would, I misspoke there. It would move the last day of school to be the 17th right here, which is a half, would be a half day. So we would move that one day and that Thursday would be a full day of school. It would not impact graduation. Graduation would still stay on the 16th. Those students do graduation week anyway. So, but what, the payoff is, is that it's, we're not trying to run the dual day, which we've already, we do for parent teacher conferences and then we do it for in between the semester breaks at the high school. But I'm, I'm just concerned that, you know, running that can be confusing for families. But at the same time, you know, our, our teachers could use that time for that professional development during that.
I think what happened was that originally this calendar had one day missing. And so then the 28th was originally in service and then it was plugged in because of that not having the 175 days rather than putting it at the end. So I think that's why you ended up with it scheduled probably, because I think originally it was supposed to be professional development. And then, then because it was short a day, it went there. As I remember, I could be wrong, but that's the way I remember it.
It makes sense to me to do that 28th as a professional development because it just seems like it'd be confusing to the kids to go a week, come and then be off the next day.
Yeah. And I look at it with my, I look at it with my parent hat on. If my, if my boys told me, you know, if they were at the high school that they had to go to school that day, but they were going to have the next day off, I would really think like, how much learning is going to actually happen on the day you come back from?
Yeah.
A week off. And, and so I think we can get more learning by, by doing that, so.
Seems a lot more functional.
The, the other piece that I would like to propose is that starting in January, we do take the second Wednesday of every month and use it as an early release day to start doing some of the social emotional work that we were talking about, especially around restorative practices and partnering with the Greater Falls Collaborative. She got their name right off the top of her head. It's Greater Falls is the first part.
Prevention Coalition.
Yes, thank you. But working with them to, again, every teacher in our buildings and our, and our, and our staff are focused on the social emotional learning of students right now. Because we're seeing it, we're hearing it. I mean, and our teachers need more tools to address students. Because if we don't get a hold of it, next year, we're going to be behind again. And we need, you know, I really feel we need to build it in now and can't wait until next year to really start attacking it. And again, time is a commodity, you know. So we're proposing, starting that on January, pull that down a little bit, on January 12th. So again, it's the second Wednesday, so January 12th, February 9th, March 9th. And we would mark up a new calendar and do this. April 13th, May 11th. And, and right now, June 8th would be, depending on where we're going to end up with the end of the year, it might not be needed. If, if we don't know where we are, we have to apply for, you know, for days lost and stuff like that. So if we're going to get pushed way down, it might be appropriate to still have that. But we would kind of use that as maybe a floater.
I would think it's towards the end of the school, that close to the end of school, it would be better not to because your seniors in particular are, that is going to be their last week. And taking a half day in the middle of their last week may not be. And taking a half day in the middle of their last week is may not be to their benefit in particular, because they they might need that time. There's always those last things when they've got to get finished. You've got a whole bunch of activities at the elementary level, like uh sports days or or special days that take place also. And so I would hate to have it cut a day in June. I love the other ones. And I think that would be really good. It's uh it also good for our staff, because I think their social emotional needs are pretty high right now as well.
Question? Yeah, Andy, you had said that uh one time per month, early release dates, and said one on curriculum, one on social and emotional. Now it's sounding like it's I misunderstood.
So so next year.
Okay.
We're, I, when we start to build it, I'd like to build it with at least one.
Okay.
But also maybe have a second one that would show two, so that we would be able to every month focus on curriculum and instruction and also focus on social emotional learning. So that would be for next year. And um but if it felt like there was like that was too many early release days, then we would have to go to some kind of an alternation of one month we'd be doing social emotional, and the next month we would do be doing curriculum instruction. But that needs to be worked out with the principals and with the the association and stuff.
And so the implication, first of all, for families, because they have kids coming home earlier than usual. Uh otherwise, we budget for the for the teacher's time and everybody else who's involved. So that's a it's a budget implication. But more importantly, it's for the families and we need to make sure they're comfortable with all of that. I get it for the.
Yeah, yeah. So I I mean, for for budgetary, I mean, the the teachers are already gonna be there, whether it's an early release or not. I mean, the other piece that if we were if we looked at doing two days a week.
Two days a month.
Two days a month, thank you. Yeah, two days a week, we're gonna do two, no, uh is that potentially, we we might be able to, you know, we didn't talk about it today, um but i- is look at, is that an appropriate use of ESSR funds? Because we're trying to address loss of learning.
Right.
And could we provide after-school care uh for for families that need it or something of that nature? So so that's why I I I want to say that's the the vision, if you will. I don't know if we'll get there on this next year, but um with that idea.
That's a great idea for the simple reason too, that um loss, if we're addressing loss of learning and we're taking them out of class for those times and not having students there, if we had some other activity for the students and could get them covered for that time, so that they were working on some of those social emotional needs as well. And freeing up the teachers to do something else, it might be a better way of of.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's the balance, right? We've got, we've got X number of teachers for our students and and our students are staying here and the teachers are full. I don't, it's finding staff for that time.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you'd have to plan some kind of of, you know, um activity, maybe win parent support. And even looking at these days, uh the one, two, three, four, well, five, if you don't count June, the five that are coming that you're talking about this spring. Finding some kind of activity, maybe parent support or the other, the kinds of things that would support those kids to give, to keep them there to support that loss of learning. While still giving your staff some time to work on the others, I think our staff really needs it as well.
So I don't, to be very honest with you, I don't know if you, because you approved this calendar for this current year. If you need to approve amendments to the calendar.
I I think all, I think your your school boards are able to give early release days. I don't know whether you'd have to get that approved by through all of the I don't think districts, because they are the ones that approve additional early release days. That's what's in the CBA and that's what it it tells you.
So it's by districts, not by.
Possibly, look at, you'd have to look at that.
Well, what's.
Little, not much, because I mean, to get everything through all the different boards by January would would be challenging and to get that information out the parent.
I would like to make a motion that we have a professional development day on February twenty eighth
Yeah.
two thousand twenty-two. And there'll be no students on campus that day. And we will add a half a day to the school calendar. So the last day of school would be June. A full day of the calendar, so the last day would be June seventeenth. Did I get that right?
You did.
I, well, second Molly's motion. Um. And I think we should vote on that. With the understanding that the um union can come back to us if that's an issue.
I I have spoken to them already about it also, so.
In-service days. During the school year, any board may schedule early release days, and it doesn't want to more of them as days to be used for in-service programs. So it has to go back to the individual boards. That's six point three.
Man, says any board or any board.
But we're not, so so what you're telling, so what you're saying is that um we need to bring it to each floor.
Yes.
Okay, so I would draw my motion and I will put it on the highest.
And the other agendas.
Well, you can add the, and you can adjust the calendar. But you can't do the in-service days. Because the calendar has to be a hundred and seventy-five days.
Right.
And right now, all you all we're doing is switching the in-service day to the other day or not during that.
Uh she's adding a half day at the end of her kids.
Well, it's it's, no, she's switching the early, the early release day the day before to the other day. And just putting the whole day the day before that. It's the same number of early release days.
Okay. Then we'll.
But so if I could just ask for clarification, based on that, why would each board need to vote then on an early release day?
Because you're adding early release days and that's what the CBA says.
Early release or in-service for the CBA?
Those are in-service days. But it says early release days. And it doesn't want to more of them as to use to be used for in-service programs. So any board may schedule the early release days.
That's not. We're not changed, we're not adding an early release.
But he wants to, he wants to add. It has nothing to do with one sheet, she it has nothing to do with the motion she made.
Okay.
It has to do with not doing a motion for the early, early.
All right, well, we weren't doing that, so.
She's okay, all she's she's done is switch the two days, change the calendar. There's no change in number of days, number of.
So motion on the floor or withdraw?
There's a motion on the floor.
All right, Molly's motion is still on the floor. Are we ready to vote?
Mr. Money, the water, I apologize.
That's okay. Um. School days cost us money, so David Major, you can vote.
I vote yes.
Charlie Hattson.
I vote yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Brenda Farkas.
Yes.
Deb Wright.
Yes.
Finn.
Yes.
Uh Priscilla.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
And Cheryl.
Yes.
The motion passes. Next up, a hopefully brief update on school nutrition program.
It's so important, though.
It is so important. And we usually get Harley off track, because we talk about the things he makes. We're talking about the menu.
Okay, so brief, is that five minutes or is that ten minutes?
What do you need?
We can do it in two months.
Oh, wow.
We can do it in two hours.
That's what you told me earlier, too, just so you know, I mean. I'm your van.
Okay, thank you, Anna. Um I'm just here to respond to a budget committee request for more detailed information about the food service financials. There were a lot of questions about the food service budget and how it's different from other school budgets in the sense that it's enterprisal, so we we make money, we lose money. And a lot of the time, we just pay attention to the expenses. So just here, clarify what's been going on, to the best of my knowledge, uh for the last three years. So here it is in one page. Andy should have.
Yeah, I did, I did send, I sent the slide to them.
Yeah, I mean, I replied back asking for permission to view it.
Sorry. Okay, so sorry about that.
So I don't know if everybody can or not.
There is a detailed breakdown, um twenty pages about the last three years, and that's how we arrived here. Special quick shout out to Shawna um for putting all of this together on her way out the door, running the midnight oil and working to the very end as she always did. Thank you, Shawna. Yeah, so here we go, this school year nineteen. Um we have the budget and then we have the year-to-date, which is the actuals. So as you can see, we always go over budget on expenditures. Um and so far, we have always gone over budget on revenues, which is good. That's what we want to see. Um this school year twenty is where things started to get really interesting because of um COVID. So with COVID came a lot of new things, some of them uh challenging, and some of them were great opportunities for us with um federal flexibilities to serve meals in different ways. We were lucky enough that our staff really leaned in and took advantage of those flexibilities to make hay while the sun was shining. And um that was to the tune of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in surplus revenue that year. Um also, special shout out, not to forget about all of the staff, teachers, pares, bus drivers, um custodial staff, all the people who during the initial shutdown volunteered their time to deliver food and to help pack food. Um they're a huge reason for that windfall that year, and they had no need to do that. They did that out of their own kind of heart, trying to help the kids. Um I don't want that to be forgotten in this Rosie financial report. This school year twenty-one, so last year, is when things really got wild with the universal meals and the federal flexibilities that allowed multi-day meals to go and be sent home to kids. So those were our food boxes, um that some of you may have seen. We were um, we really leaned into that and we really took the opportunity seriously to help get the food out to our kids and also to um you know, really try to take care of the program financials, because that's not always what happened at every other ESU in the state. A lot of programs really suffered financially during the pandemic. Our staff leaned in again. And a lot of people came together to make that possible. And as you can see, our revenue ballooned um from nine hundred and sixty-four thousand the first year to two point two million last year. Uh that is probably never gonna happen again, I will let you know. But it's nice to have a rainy day fund, especially with what we're dealing with this year. Constant quarantining, constant school shutdown, all of that equals loss of revenue for our program. Um so we will be dealing with challenges in the future, but I don't anticipate that we'll ever need to adjust um our budget requests for for the assessment for the next several years anyway, because we do have a nice pad. So there it is, that's the report. There's lots of great pictures if you're interested, but I know time is precious and oh, actually. This is all numbers, numbers. That's the budget.
There's one more that had meal table.
That one?
That's the credit balance, one more. Great staff, we're going forward now.
We're going forward, Robert.
We just scroll through these. Lots of infrastructure upgrades, addressing things that need addressed. Learning state-of-the-art line at the high school. A lot of this was made possible by three separate COVID grants. Um there was the summer food grant, the COVID relief grant, and then parts of the ESSR one that made a lot of these infrastructure updates possible. Um huge push to try to um do these upgrades while we have the money. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was just from those first two grants that weren't mentioned a lot, but it was the summer food grant and the Corona Relief Fund Grant, which were all part of your original cares money. So RSU was able to get two separate grants for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars each, which is some of the largest awards in the state. And we did that by being really careful how we wrote the grant narratives, focusing on just getting the assets, they're called capital assets, like an oven, a refrigerator. Um and then the school nutrition program absorbed a lot of the cost of the installations. So that was another thing that, you know, the two point two million in revenue, three hundred thousand dollar in surplus that didn't tell the whole picture of all the money we spent to get these assets in place. And I don't want that to be forgot. And then, of course, in the process of that number, there was a lot of great food that went out um to our communities. This is the one I wanted to stop on. So this is this school year twenty twenty. The meal counts, so the state keeps track of your meal count numbers to give you USDA um fund allocations. So the amount you're rewarded from USDA is based on how many meals you served in the prior year. This came out um this summer, and I just think it's worth noting to put it in perspective how much, you know, how hard our people worked for this. Wind in the northeast was eight from the state of Vermont, and the number of meals served in twenty twenty. Summer food meals. So clearly punching above our weight there, you can see we're above Rattleboro, Burlington, Rutland area. That that shows that with a small staff, this is be crank.
Nice job. Cheryl. Well, first of all, you know, everything you've done is so outstanding, you and the whole team. All acknowledge that. Jim McCullough, member of the budget committee, has asked a question about cash flow. Because when we get the bi-month with the twice a month reports, it's there's always a deficit. And so you're using the cushion you've created probably to make sure your cash flow is not an issue. What do we say to Jim in response to his question?
Yeah.
About cash flow?
I I think that that's an excellent question for the business office. I am not a cash flow expert, and I if I pretended to know how that works, I would be I I do not, I don't understand. All I know is that at the end of the year, I try to make sure that those total expenditures stay where they need to stay in relation to the total revenue, so that I'm doing my part. I would love to know more about the cash flows.
Probably what he was concerned about was whether um with your, if your expenditures were extremely high, whether we were having to take money out of our budgets to cover stuff partway through. Um and or whether it was just reconciled totally at the end of the year or where we're kind of at. Um whether, so do you just get your money from the business office or how does that work?
Again, I don't spend a lot of the time under the hood of the financials and how the business office works, but I know that in terms of the money we and it, but we we don't, we spend it one month at a time essentially, because we're it's only going out when we're buying food or um paying people. I don't know how health insurance and benefits and things like that work. But we're also receiving money on a monthly basis from our AOE claims, so we 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 send the government a bill for all the meals we serve. We say, okay, we served a hundred thousand lunches, and then they accept the claim and send us the check, but um.
Is it, do you know about the turnaround? Is it pretty quick or is you have?
I I don't know.
We'd have to ask the business.
But you keep track of it, so you know that more money coming in than you're spending.
I keep track of, yes, I keep track of how much we're gonna make, because I know the federal reimbursement rates and I know how many meals we've served. And then I know how much we've spent, because we all get the expenditure reports. And I also keep.
And we do get revenue monthly for Harley. We do. Every month, we do receive um um revenues for him as um different services that he's providing to um the um to another um districts. We do receive a monthly um um cash flow for him as well. Um regardless, a portion of him is still gets assessed of the to the school, so we get that portion as well. Um and as well, um the um extra. And as well, the extra money that he has from previous years, that is another funds that he uses as well. But what he is spending in purchasing equipment and everything else, he's been using grants funds that he's been getting for those equipments. So it's not something that is coming from the SU itself.
Harley, I, I, this is David Major. I just want to say you run a remarkable program and I want to thank you for it and commend you for it. And the community is a healthier community because of the work you and your staff and the food service program is doing. I have, I have one other question about finances, which may or may not be something that you can answer. But when you do capital purchases, you're upgrading your equipment. Is that just counted as the year by year expenses that we, that we see in that very brief, you know, summary that you, you posted? Or are the capital expenses something that is spread out over, over the years? Maybe that's you Flora, but just wanted to get it clarified what the, what the capital, how the capital expenses are allocated.
Go ahead Flora.
So if it is equipment that he's purchasing, that gets depreciated on a monthly, on a yearly basis. But his purchases are covered with grants, so his capital equipment hasn't been coming from the SU.
Okay. Thank you.
Going back Flora, so the assessments that you do to each of the districts, is that based on the projected costs and it's split up that way based on that? Or are there times that you charge the districts more because the money has a delay coming in?
No, so we went over this. This is a question that was been asked before. We do not assess the school, anything else. Even if we had to, we would need to get approved for any extra assessment because the assessment of the SU is budgeted for. It gets voted by the towns, so that means that every school will be going over budget and will not have the money for it because that was not voted for. So we do not extra assess.
Okay, I just, that, that kind of answers the cash flow situation as well. And yes, if anyone has not eaten, go and try some of the meals that Harley has done. I had the privilege of doing that back a month or two ago and it was absolutely outstanding.
Thank you everyone.
All right, up next. Finance, we're skipping the budget development update. So lease agreements. I think Lynn had some questions. Everybody had the lease agreement for the SU offices sent out to them. And there was a couple of questions. So Lynn, do you want to go ahead?
Reading it over again, it pretty much boiled down to just the one question about the rent going up every year by 3%. Isn't that normal? I mean, when, this was years ago and I was renting houses. I don't remember my rent going up every year.
I was not a part of the, of that piece. I would have to look into that as, as far as the question of, is it normal for that?
It just seems like an awful lot.
I, I don't know. I, Flora, you were involved in?
No, neither of us were involved at all in anything that had to do with finding the property or signing contracts or anything. So that would have been Mr. Pratt and the other person would have been maybe David Clark, either of, maybe they could explain better with that. But that was agree upon the chair of the board.
But, but I, I will definitely look into that. Is, is that a typical lease?
Right.
Kind of don't have much choice at this point.
We need to look into. Was there any other questions on the lease agreement? Okay. Other, did you have an other Flora or Andy or a placeholder?
I think that was a placeholder.
Okay. Onto old business, 6A is being tabled till later. Andy, what about 6?
Ended up shutting down mine.
Oh, it's all executive session, never mind. Seven, special ed update. You'll go to six is executive session. It's got the special ed update.
One of the things under special, let's just, can we do that one first, was to approve the D seven, which was a former G 10 policy. And what we did for that was we simply added two paragraphs. If I need to read them, I'll have to.
What is the title of the policy?
It's special education.
That's the whole title. Okay.
I don't think there's any other.
And it was, I'm sorry, it was G 10?
G, it was G 10 and we're just moving it to D seven to meet the same numbering system as the state's policies. Their superintendent associations have policies so that it, to make it easier. Because when they tell us that something needs to be updated or needs to be changed, that just seemed to be a better numbering system. But we will basically have the same things, but we'll just have updated everything hopefully. Okay, Vermont. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have that ready.
What's the other special ed item?
The other one was to update the, I had asked for an update on the, how it was set up in the different programs because the programs.
And I think Stacy Alexander, and she's here and she can speak to it, but I believe that at that meeting, she said that she would not be able to have that ready.
She did not have the numbers ready. I don't know if she has the, the.
So Priscilla, at the, at the board meeting or budget meeting, I had expressed not wanting to discuss possible scenarios for staffing in open session for next year. But I would be happy to do it in executive session, but I was not under the impression it was going to be on the board agenda for this evening.
I had already asked for it at our, at the time of our, our meeting. And so I thought maybe there would still be a general one, but that's okay, Stacy. I understand.
I guess that request never got to me, so I apologize for that, but I was not.
That is perfectly fine. Do you want, well, we had set the date of our next meeting. I believe it's going to be January. Can you attend then and we'll do an executive session for you?
Um, I will do my best to be there depending on the date. I just need to know when the date is and then I can do that. Yes. I'm just trying not to miss my son's basketball games.
Okay, so we're probably going to have to do an early meeting in January as well, so I think it'll be the 12th.
Okay.
It'll be the 5th or the 12th. Whichever works for the most people.
I think too, maybe it, it would be nice to have that information as far as numbers and things for the budget committee. That's one of the things that we kind of need before we, before we meet.
So I guess, Priscilla, could you clarify what you're asking me to present?
Well, one thing I need for, we need for budget committee is we need to know the number of, of staff. We've kind of not gotten any handle at all on the number of paras that.
Yep, so actually that was presented at the budget committee meeting. All of that information is on the narrative side of the special education budget.
It's, yeah, I asked, I asked every, I asked every department and every principal to put the F T Es on those sheets.
I know, I know that at the Rocky Hand meeting we had that, but I don't remember seeing it at the S U meetings, which it covers all of the special ed ones.
Yes.
I remember it. Okay. All right. So I stand corrected, Stacy.
I, I, I'm, I'm going to take a stab in the dark and say 52, but.
It was 23 case managers and 58 paraprofessionals. Hello Sandy.
Okay, so Stacy, I guess you're awful good for January.
Perfect. Yeah, if you decide, if you decided you want something different, just let me know. Cause it will take me some time to talk about some systems for next year.
Yeah, you had mentioned some changes and so it probably, it might be nice to update us from that standpoint if you firm them up by then and know what they're going to be. If they're still in flux, we understand it's, you know, we still have another six months at least.
Yeah. Um, I think a realistic timeline, given everything that's happening right now, I would probably be able to do that sometime in March. Just because a lot of my time right now is being taken up with the compliance monitoring that we have to do for the agency of ed. So a lot of policies that are having to be created, a lot of information that's having to be gathered and put out for a January 15th deadline. And then a second one for a March 15th deadline. So if, if the board would be okay with me doing it in March, that would, I would certainly know what's going to happen for the following school year by then.
That's fine because it's not, it's, it's not, it's budget affecting.
To, to contracts and that kind of thing is the only thing.
It won't have anything to do with contracts. The moves are, are simply going to be based on student need. It won't change the staffing in any way. It just may rearrange how we provide services, but it won't affect budget money or budget numbers or staffing numbers.
Okay, thank you.
March is fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so going to D seven, which is, is all of the special ed one from G 10 is included. The additional paragraphs would read, it is the policy of the Wyndham Northeast Supervisory Union. This to meet the needs of students with disabilities as defined in federal and state law and regulations and to provide a free and appropriate public education. I'm leaving out the initials. I'm just reading the text. To these students in the least restrictive environment that will allow all students to benefit educationally. The agency of education as the stated education agency is responsible for this overall provision of a free, appropriate public education to eligible Vermont students with disabilities and does this through the implementation of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. The Wyndham Northeast Supervisory Union will use the guidelines developed by the Vermont Agency of Education in its most current edition of the Vermont Special Education Procedures and Practices Manual regarding special education issues. The manual is designed to assist Vermont school districts in understanding the provisions of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Improvement Act and meeting its requirements. The manual can be found on the Vermont Education Agency of Education's website.
Okay, can we have a motion to adopt the policy for special education now known as D seven?
Some.
Okay. I'll second it if we need one. Any further discussion? No? All right, let's vote. Deb Wright, I think we have to skip the Westminster people.
Aye.
Brenda Farkas.
Aye.
Ethan Benson.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes.
Priscilla.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Cheryl's Westminster. All right, the motion passes. So we need to set the next meeting date. And then we will do director's comments if you're okay with doing them in reverse order. I think we need to have a meeting early in January. Sorry. And I don't know if our alternate day is the 5th or the 12th because we usually say the second or first. Is the alternate choice?
Probably the second because second, if the fourth is the official, right, the, the left, the fourth one's, yeah.
Yeah, no, it was the 26th.
Do we need the budget meeting prior to that so that we can bring the budget to us or we may end up with two meetings in January?
Do you have a budget committee meeting scheduled?
We do not. We have mentioned the first week in January. That's why I'm.
So can you do the first week in January for budget and the second week for the supervisory union? So can we have a motion to set the next date? I don't think I need a motion. I don't need a motion. Our next meeting is going to be January 12th at 6:30 PM right here. Director's comments, we will start on the TV, David Major. And after this, we'll go to executive session where we will address six and five C one.
All pass. Thank you very much.
Okay, Deb Wright.
Only thing I would say, the, just letting people know, Saturday is the parade of lights and the lighting of the Christmas tree in Square in Bellas Falls. That's it. Thanks.
Brenda Farkas.
I'm all set.
Ethan Benson.
I'm all set tonight. Thank you.
Harley Hutchison.
I just would like to thank Andy and Harley for the incredible presentations and the incredible work that went, that preceded those presentations. Thank you.
Next up, Jack, if you'd like to.
I'm still having all the trouble talking. I'm, I'm, I'm fine. Thanks.
Lynn.
Again, Andy and Mr. Todd, thank you so much for your presentations. It's helped me a lot.
Priscilla. Yeah, there's been a lot of, of information out there. But we still have a lot of work to do. So it's going to be an intense time, I think, for the next month on budgets and straightening all of that out. But I look forward to coming up with a budget that will be fiscally responsible to the Jack Spears, but, but also very supportive of our schools because I think that's important to all of our students, our staff and our administration. Thank you. Molly.
I've got a couple of things. I've had some community members ask me, why voting members aren't in person at meetings? Um, the, the thing that a couple of people repeated to me was our schools are safe for our children. Why aren't they safe for a school board member? There's reasons why a school board member could be on a Zoom meeting if you're, if you're ill for certainly. You know, I just went out to get some air in the parking lot's bright white, so that means if somebody lives a long ways away and doesn't like driving and crap, maybe they want to stay home tonight. So nothing against anybody tonight at all, but we, you know, it's the constant of a few of us that come a lot and the community is just, I think, reaching out to, you know, having people in person. And one gentleman told me that he thought it just, you know, kind of brought everybody together more as a team when you were together face to face. So that's just a community comment kind of, but it was brought to my attention a couple of times. I'm a huge supporter of, I'm bringing up the high school board also. I think it's, I think it's important. The other thing I, I don't know how we ever became not a member of Vermont School Board Association. But I would like after we get through budget seasons to talk about that because, you know, whether we believe or disbelieve in some of the things that they believe in, there's a lot of stuff there that we could learn from. In the last month or so. In the last month or so, I've been on that website a lot just to, to kind of guide myself in some things. And there's a lot of information, a lot of help there and a lot of training there. We talked about training board members, but that training is already set up in the Vermont School Board, if we just used it. So I don't know if it was a political thing or what, but after we get through budgets, I'd like to talk about it. Thank you.
Why don't you put it on the agenda, actually, if you want to talk about it, we should talk about it before budgets because we have to pay to be members. It's like $7,000. I think supervisory unions could be members, but school boards cannot, funny enough. But we should talk about it before the budget if we're going to.
I mean, even if we do it for next year, I just want to, just want to have a discussion of what happened and why aren't we, is it all about money or is it about, we don't believe in them? I don't know. So I'm not saying ask we done this year. We haven't been a member for a couple of years and I'm aware.
Right.
But I think that I think it's just something that, you know, we could be using some sources pretty easily.
Anything else?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Cheryl. Thank you. I want to make comments in two categories. One is to go back to Harley and the food program and, and how brilliantly it's been managed financially, the quality of the food. And I'd also like to reinforce how much you buy from local farmers and how good that is in every way, including for our local economy. So thank you for all of that. The other is for all of us, just the pressures on our children and our family, our teachers, the parents, everybody. This just has been going on for such a long time. And the stress is enormous. And I just want us all to really listen and, and, and be present for people. Like Molly, what you just said, you know, hearing what folks are saying about a perception of whether you're here in person for the meetings or not. I just want us all, including myself, to do whatever we can to hear what's really going on around us because I know it's just very difficult for so many people. And the extent to which we can be sensitive to that and share the information with one another will inform all of our, our decision making. So I know you're already doing it. I just want to reinforce how important it is. Thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
You can.
But it just dawned on me that we're not going to meet again until after the holidays. So everyone, please have a safe and happy holiday.
Yes.
I had two thoughts.
Needed time off.
Yeah. I had two thoughts and I totally lost the first one of them. I'm sorry. But I do want to point out that our school nurses, they've been working like 60 to 80 hours a week and they don't get paid overtime or any of that. So shout out to them. And now I will entertain a motion to go into executive session. Are we anticipating any action? No action anticipated. So we will see everyone else in January. Thank you. Oh, and invite, we need to invite Andy to attend.
Yeah.
Stella moved it because she remembered. Have we a second? Your question, Deb?
My question, my question is, did you, did you say the re, the purpose for the executive session? We need to do that.
Fred, the, she's got it written down.
Okay.
The subjects discussed that can't be done in open session right now are personnel and negotiations. I think that's it. Audit report. Yes, the audit report. So Priscilla made that motion. Somebody seconded it. Molly did. And let's vote. Deb, you're first.
Aye.
David Major.
Aye.
Brenda Farkas.
Aye.
Isn Benson.
Yes.
Harley Hutchison.
Yes.
Jack, you don't have to vote. Lynn?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
And Cheryl.
Yes.
All right, the ayes have it. We'll do executive session and then we'll come out just to adjourn with no other action.